What if it's a strong up, this is from page 1 of the newspaper. It lies on the Keta building, where the House of Representatives is holding a public hearing with officials of Hummer.
I'm Mr. Richard, I'm the CEO of Casamino Gold and Director of Hummer Resources. So, I'll start from the other end. I'm a representative of the President, Representative of the National Council of Congress, a member of this committee.
Alright, I think it's 1223 here. It comes from Nima County, a member of this committee.
I'm Mr. Tijia, representing people of East Africa, South Africa.
Honorable Alexander Paul, present number 11.
The right on the Mount Thomas, here in the country, they should not go to our country. A ranking number of 11.
I'm Jeremiah House of Consignors, Representative of the District of New York County, Chair of the Assembly of the District for this joint meeting.
I'm fully and well formulated among counties. I'm the Chair of the Assembly of the District. So... Uh, Madam Chief Clerk, you have a communication? To the Sanya, we asked that in names on the, on the, on the letter, and the media gave a notice. So, they offered, here the lawyer speak to their client. They are issued to like five of them. They then advised them to sign the engagement here. Our lawyers did not speak now here.
Thank you.
So, that's the reason to speak to them. They are issued to buy. And either the staff from the company, or you think you have better knowledge of the CEO, manager, community that will pay compensation. So, as I say, please, only the staff.
All the witnesses, please turn. Turn around, please. Raise your right hand. Call your name and your position and repeat.
Listen.
I. Do solemnly swear. At the testimony I'm about to give, I say with ex-pleaded hearing, repeat the truth. And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
So help me God. Keep your hands off my history.
So, uh, thank you again. You have the chair. But before then, you know. We're asking a reading.
Um, we said July 8th, 2025. I present Mr. Richard, Chief Executive Officer, President of the National Council of Congress, a member of Liberia. Dear Mr. Richards, I present compliments and write by the direction of an equally formulated chairman, House's Joint Committee, and the time of session of lines three, to advise you to a public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, 16 July. I keep me in the first conference here. As a... So if you are bored, it's fine, but here before this morning, you are a special member of the government of Liberia. Hence, it's got requested to attend this next hour with all relevant documents, including copy of your contract or concession, records of tax obligation, including records of corporate social responsibility, and so on, committee. Thanks for your usual cooperation. CCI, Major, and Cian Chief Clerk, House of Representatives. As a communication.
Okay, so... That was the first, the first thing. So, the media asked you a question. Uh, Mr. Richards, did you receive, or your committee received, any communication?
I believe we did, yes.
Do you have copies of the said communication, or any communication coming from the House?
Sorry, go ahead.
You have copies of the said communication, of communication coming from the House?
I believe we did, yes.
Okay. You have any other copies?
No.
Can you please take care of, you have a copy?
I don't know that I have a copy of it, but yes, I do. Yeah?
There was a set of communications sent, do you have a copy of that same communication?
What's the date?
What's the date on the set?
July 21st.
July 21st, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you read it? You know, addressed to, uh, Martha. Yeah, I knew that Martha, I would have pulled it, pulled it for the first one.
Alright, July 21st, 25th, addressed to Mr. Cross, Master Quett Funders and Administrator Manager, a member of Resources Liberia. Subject response to request for a resumen of legislative hearing. Dear Mr. Master Quett, I present compliments and write a directive upon the poorly defined chairman, House's Committee on a first and concession, to acknowledge the suit of your communication dated July 10th, 2025, in which you informed the committee that the Chief Executive Officer of Hummer Resources Liberia Limited is currently out of country, and as such, request a resumen of the scheduled legislative hearing to September 2025. While the committee appreciates your correspondence, with which to emphasize the urgency of the compliance review of the Mineral Development Agreement. In view of this, the committee cannot accommodate the proposal, or the proposed delay until September 2025. Accordingly, the committee hereby informs your committee that the presence of the CEO is required within the period of seven days, commencing today, July 21st, 2025, to adhere before the House's Joint Committee for a public hearing as earlier scheduled. Failure to comply with this directive will impede the work of the committee and could be referred to the plan area of the House of Representatives for further action. Thank you for your urgent understanding in this regard. Sincerely, Major and Cian Chief Clerk, House of Representatives.
So, there's a communication. Mr. Park, you received the said communication? You have a copy. And the last time, the third communication, you received. The last time, the letter, the full notice, and you had, you had your staff in the meeting. Am I right, Mr. Martha? Last meeting was for the only one that you were there.
Yeah.
You come along, and state why your access from the hearing, which under by the way of the committee, should not be considered as a part of your respect. And if you have the respect, why the committee should not read it? That's the first question. Then a reason why you should not consider your access as a part of your respect? Now, before you, you say a word. I need to recognize the presence of the Deputy Commissioner for, uh, Mr. Montgomery. So, welcome again.
Honorable lawmaker, I, I did receive both letters and instructed our staff to, sorry.
The, the way, the way which you present it is international.
Chairman, Honorable. That co-chairman. Honorable Chairman and Honorable Lawmaker.
Co-chairman.
Co-chairman, sorry.
And honorable. We, you don't really have a, you need a president in that form.
Okay. So, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Co-Chairman, Honorable Committee. I did receive a letter of July 8th, or subsequent letter of July 21st. After we received the letter of July 8th, I instructed our people to correspond back with the committee. In that I had a, I was just in Liberia prior to this date, and I had a medical procedure scheduled in Toronto that conflicted with this date. And I, I asked our colleagues, Mr. Juma and Mr. Masabwa, to attend the meeting on my behalf. And they did so, that was last Monday. I had, I had a subsequent medical appointment for this week as well, which I've canceled. And obviously, I'm here today to present my, to discuss this matter with, with the committee. So, I'm happy to field any questions or any, any further questions, but I, I don't feel that there was any intent for to obstruct this committee's business. And quite frankly, I don't believe that I should be held in contempt because I'm going to give clear instructions that I had a medical procedure last week and this week, which has been now subsequently postponed for three months. So, um, that's my, that's my response.
So, colleague, that's the response of the witness. Do you have any questions?
So, if I got him right, he said that, uh, the excuse given was, uh, for medical reasons, right?
Yeah, but the excuse was.
Yeah, so, do we have before us, um, record, medical record proving that, uh, indeed he was, uh, he has a medical condition from what he has to, to honor go to surgery?
Do we can mean?
Yeah.
Do we not have?
There's no fight before us, officer. There's no information.
Okay, so Presiding. The excuse we receive was an excuse asking for an extension up to September. There was nothing stated as to why we didn't want to ask.
Okay, why is true that we would not, we would not dive into his medical report? I think it's important that we establish that indeed, he did not choose to, to just stay away and want to power up. So, there's something that must be presented to us to show that indeed, uh, he, he had, he had to attend to some medical issue.
So, um...
Yeah, we don't want to go deep into medical report.
First, in such an issue where you say you are in the country, to validate that position is either through a plane ticket, your travel time, to stay that you're not in the country. Two, while we're not going to the medical process, is to state that, yes, I have a registration from this hospital that I had an appointment for this day that kept me out of the country. You are not sure anything to suggest here, you also put your ID. Why you think you should take your work is out of?
Well, I'm happy to, Klaus, I thought we did.
Yeah, 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 yes. It's a little bit.
No, they give, they need a kind of document.
I'm sorry. Sorry? So, this has been submitted to the committee, these, these documents. I need the office of the Chief Clerk. Chair, because if we don't have that.
So, the obvious, the Chief Clerk. So, you have a document? Well, you have a copy of the document, you can be.
Yeah, yeah, yes, a copy of the document.
So, you have a copy of the document?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Do you, do you have the, the documents? The documents are made, I give you a copy for all to see.
Yeah, 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 give it up.
Is that?
I give it, yeah.
I can, I can let me see while. And knowledge of receipt of documents, one thing. They're not asking for an experience, eh, Canada. How does it happen? July 11th?
I'm seeing a trial in from Vietnam, July 20th. Am I right?
Sorry?
The issue is to be on the 20th of July.
I can't hear. Sorry.
The ticket was issued on the 28th of July.
Correct.
When did you receive the first?
120 you received.
Did I see, received this last year?
All the data on 120 you received.
I received this letter after the meeting of last Monday. This came subsequent to the meeting of last Monday, I believe. Didn't this come after the meeting of last Monday? But it's taken this one. Sorry.
Is this a return ticket?
Yes, it's a return ticket, yes, yes.
I'm asking for the ticket, but if this is the return ticket, a migrant ticket, the ticket filed to the, when you receive the letter, the first time you receive the letter, were you in the country?
Yeah. I don't want to see what I love.
So... So, Mr. Richards, you got a letter from a time of the communication.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you please show it?
The last, last two pages.
The last this?
Yeah, yeah.
Tuesday, 15th. The one, the 15th of July. Presiding. Presiding? Yeah. One was the last. One they hit, they sell him on 125. Huh? They rescheduled.
They rescheduled.
For the 8th. For the 15th. The 8th did what reschedule to the 15th.
Yeah.
So, uh, Presiding. I was the one who was to appear here, he didn't come, and I let off.
On the, on the 10th, huh?
On the 10th. What if President did that, man? On the 8th?
He should have been on 16th, yeah, he should have been on 16th. Yeah. He should have been on 16th.
So, the question is.
We think he was.
So, you guys, the medical call was in the time, making it here. On the 16th.
No problem. No question.
So, or June. Yeah, we found.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding, Mr. Colis, uh, Colis. Uh, having requested the coming document, the medical appointment on the CEO of Hummer Brett, to prove the reason why he would not appear before the committee, with the document before us, 15 years, that was actually a good appointment. And sitting across the table, we are all came up and move if I'm routine or second. Uh, we pardon Brent for his use and drop the charge of contempt there proceeding into the hearing.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, then move a second that the complaint proceeding, the drop. And we see the actual hearing. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
The intent proceeding is dropped. And now we have the actual hearing for which they have been called. Actual reasons, or reasons for which they have been called, which is the diplomacy of the concession agreement since six years ago.
I've seen the blank sheet before me. It's up later. One of the that is a copy of the LRA analysis of social contribution.
Alright, well, that's the other, the communication to the company requested.
So, we're going to go to the actual reality.
Thank you.
My yes, you have to switch my. So, Richards, in the communication we requested of you, this, uh... One, that copy of your concession contract, your concession agreement. Agreement. Now, we'll compare it for all the copies. Usually, you always bring a list and we.
Yeah, I give, I look copy the.
One?
Not the one, I give.
American.
Who yet, I balance it, I give four. What? If you will leave me, I give four.
You should always. Son, my man.
The last one, the last one, the last one, the last one, the last one.
So, the next document we add was tax obligation.
They would tell that how many copies, right?
Yeah, the last one, I said, I said you have this. I agree.
I will, I will meet the office.
No, that tomorrow, we will.
We have a hearing.
Yes, for.
Tax obligations and social contribution. You got a copy of it? Mr. Richards, I'm asking you.
I'm just conferring with Klaus because I believe, uh... Did they get a copy?
So, while we consulting, while they do your own competition, we ask the IRA to bring up to speed with, uh, findings from our request to the IRA. Is that a meeting?
I hope you're the new chair. I think they have a, I think they finish those are.
So... Mr. Richards, you're in the IRA. Based on what you have paid, the current status of that payment, you should have a record. Based on that record, you can compare that with the IRA's findings. Can we lay our hands on that record and you also do a copy?
This is, uh, the opinion of the day. What we do.
Do they say this?
No.
What do you like this?
So, it's LRA document.
Document.
Yeah.
Okay. LRA? I'm seeing what they, it took. Yeah, it's a total payment. Yeah. Yeah, total payment. So, do you? Oh, okay. Uh, Master Quett.
Yeah.
You're not a reporter. You're going to print something for the system here. You will give an explanation, you give us an explanation of what you have done. We ask you, there's much of records of tax obligation, including others of corporate social contribution. They didn't give a printout. So, why you explain this report?
We don't know what is clear to you, you want to reconcile what we do, LRA.
So, right now, you should be able to present this as a supporting document based on your explanation. Because let me say this to you. We live in a country where everyone believe that when concessions are passed and they are not monitored, the community do not reap the benefit of the concessions. And as such, it backfire on lawmakers and people. You say you will provide jobs, you say you provide social services, they should give you tax exemptions, everything. All of those are provided. And if you go out there and steal like Brent people, you steal the community, it's great, it comes right back on lawmakers. So, because of that. It strongly says that we need to do this compliance review to help us to understand where we fall down and how we all can strengthen the. So, that's the essence of the year. It's definitely because, as I said, the model, the model see, the people in Bongo deal, the people in Sino reaping the benefit of their resources. And if you can come here, I presented some of the documents, I think you'd be the same for all reason why. Mr. Richards.
Honorable Chairman and, uh, honorable lawmakers. I, I'd like to just give some contrast and a bit of history so I can put the situation into some context. I believe everyone's aware that I'm fairly new to Hummer Resources Liberia. I joined the company in December after the parent company, Hummer Bird PLC, got into financial distress. And I joined the company, um, when it was, I joined Hummer Bird Resources Liberia, uh, when it was also in distress. And I invested my own money to rehabilitate, um, the financial situation of Hummer Bird Liberia. And that occurred in kind of December of last year. In May of this year, March, sorry, March of this year, I met with the Minister of Mines and Energy. And as a result of that meeting, he guided and advised us that you need to speak to all the stakeholders in the government, all the stakeholders to the Mineral Development Agreement, and speak to specifically the host communities, of which we have four of them in our Mineral Development Agreement. And we did that. And we hosted a meeting with all of our community, uh, host communities. And I illustrated, first of all, why I was here. I've been hired by the company to build a mine. Not hired here to continually pump the exploration project down the field. I've built four. I've built four mines in my career, three of them in West Africa, and I'm here to build a mine. I'm also, um, I've been a, in this market, I've been in the capital markets for over twenty-five years, and I can raise the money to build this project. This project, um, has a feasibility study done on it in two thousand and twenty-two. The capital required to build this project is extensive to the point where I would say it may even be strategic to the country. It's four hundred and fifty million dollars to build the Dupe Gold project, but it will have a generational sized mine. And it will, yes, it will produce, uh, many jobs, many secondary jobs, many tertiary jobs, and livelihood and welfare that probably expands hundreds of thousands of people in the country. I was brought here to advance the project and build a mine. And that's why I'm here. What I said to Honorable Minister Pay was simple. I said, I'm, I'm new. I need time.
Also vision.
Sorry.
President also vision.
President, I've observed that the distinguished gentleman of a witness is a step ahead of what we want to do.
Okay, I'm just giving some.
No, just, just. Hold on, please. We were trying to establish documents first are requested that will guide us as he explains. So we haven't got those documents and he's explaining. So I observe that he's like running.
You are right, so. Mr. Richards, you know, I said by trying to listen, I feel you're leading us to why the document has to do with social corporate responsibility. That for us. But that would help us to carry on the year. Then you can explain all of the others. While we want here that we request them all. It was very clear. We said we want you to present a copy of your tax obligation. We are here complaining that there's budget shortfall consistently because we rely on the taxes. Two, we are asking the social, no, even community are outlawing a concession. They find that the concession was fact and sound. Automatically give you certain obligation. It is lack of argument.
So are they, are they, are they questioning?
Whether if they were in, uh, distress, financial distress. The person in Bongo Dile doesn't understand why you call financial distress. Say we not pay our money. Why you want to know? Whether you paid the social contribution, if you have done or you are not. If you are in default, if you ask, you want to know or you need time to go and come up with a clear report. We asking for. All of these things are available to you because you are our partner. And we want you to succeed as we want our community to succeed too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I hear you told us a copy of the concession I was given. He had tested that it is Hummer Bread concession. A concession according to the package was by the. It was published into M Bill on April tenth, twenty nineteen. And you are to take this in concession and read the last page, section five, which will be there. It says this act should take effect immediately upon the publication into M Bill. Sir President, we were clear in our communication to Hummer Bread. We wanted to know their obligation. But it's for fact, everyone know that Hummer Bread. That does not mitigate the fact that they have obligation. If you were to read the same concession agreement at page forty-four, that cover of community resources. And you were to read section eight point two. Spare out obligation by the, by the management of Hummer Bread to several communities. Sando supposed to receive hundred thousand. Grant group, hundred thousand. U G, fifty thousand. Maryland company, fifty thousand. So if a question, can the management of Hummer Bread tell this body whether to add maybe more to this payment?
So, your team has a project. This is right, Mr. Richards. Right then.
Yeah, we trap.
Richards, Brad, given as my first name. Or Richards.
Richard is my second name.
Our question, I think you're not sure our question as well.
Yeah.
Understand the question. It's not about more than this. We want the document to speak for itself.
Understood.
There's a concession before us that was published April nineteenth. As of now, they are yearly payment. Our question to you, are you in good standing of this? If you are in good standing, we need a copy of all of your payment records.
And, and no, we are not in good standing. Um, the meeting I held with the community, uh, back in, uh, March, uh, April, I, I told the community we were not in good standing and made a commitment to the community that we would start immediately making payments as long as they have a governance structure in place to receive those payments. Still waiting for that. But I said I would continue to make payments throughout the remainder of this year and that we would be fully compliant with our mineral development agreement by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. I said I needed time. And that was the message I, I left with them. And, and I'm still waiting for confirmation as to when we can make the first payment.
So, Mr. CEO.
President, President, can I come here a little bit?
Yeah.
So, uh, and Mr. Richards, you know, you met with the community. And normally, by our own, uh, public financial management law, we find that all revenue should be supposed to be. So the issue that has to be a social corporate responsibility should be paid into the government and to the citizen setting up, uh, leadership structure. So normally, uh, during a, during a period, a revenue authority will do an assessment. Maybe you have informed them, okay, we go three point four and then we are going to pay like during a, during a quarter of the budget here that may be supplemental, that may be recast of the budget. They can make that prediction. So you pay the government and government will make a protest. So if you tell it on your menu, the community that it has a leadership structure, it means you are not saying the truth to this committee. I hope, I don't know if you were putting on a hook. So I want you, I want you to know that you are, you are on record. That you cannot pay this to the committee. You can pay this to the government. And Mr. President, Mr. President, let me just use this, uh, opportunity I given to me to just make this point. Sometimes, some of the issues that feed our imaginations about this M D E and that of, uh, concessions I given. The issues that have to do with the social corporate responsibility, they always find excuses to, you know, to mispay me on that thing. And there are reasons for government giving tax incentives or waivers to concession. Some of the basis reasons is that government, when the money entered the concession account, it lost its single identity to, to identify the sources that it came from. So because government wanted those tools, they wanted those free gifts, the grant group. But it is a hard to read area and when it's getting to the concession account, it becomes a problem. Government will practice on you as a concession here to give you a filter space to either increase the number of person you employ, to be able to, uh, do certain things for the community. Now, these waivers are enjoyed by you people. Mr. President, let Hummer Bread testify before you that send the concession. Here they are not enjoyed waiver granted today in that concession. And here they are enjoying the waivers granted today in that concession. If we might do the tax expenditure only for Hummer Bread or the period honor review, we'll notice what government have waived or maybe more than what the community. So there are no reasons that you can't barely say the committee to sell a leadership. It should be telling us that between now, as the living man today, you should start making payment with government accounts. And we, as the deputy of the people, the president who administered the affair of this country, is the only representative to discover the citizen and send their money to them, not him. So one, they know if you enjoy it, if you enjoy the privilege of the task incentive given in that M D A, it means that he have enough or he have physical space to pay the social corporate responsibility.
In favor. Yeah, so, so let us get someone. Your first thing is that in the absence of Hummer Bread tax obligation stated from then, and they have kept it presented to us. We might go along the line of that providing genuine analysis of the records. While you say all of that is in line, but I believe we need a way for us to treat the absence of this record. So I will still inquire them.
Yeah, I also have an inquiry. Our, uh, our chairman, distinguished ladies. Uh, my inquiry goes to the witness. Uh, I'm sorry if this was addressed before, uh, in my absence. But when I look at, uh, section eight point two, particularly my, eight point two, my, uh, my attention is drawn first to sub paragraph A and sub paragraph, uh, E and F. So my question is.
He has an inquiry.
So my, my inquiry is, is see, do we have, uh, sub paragraph E which talk about the administration or the committee? Do you sell it, is it already set up? Uh, is it already set up? Two, is, uh, sub paragraph F also in place? Is sub paragraph F is in place already?
No, one minute. You know what, just want for us to put a hole on this. The first question is that make a payment to government revenue and go sell all the thing. Have you made a payment? Do you have a receipt? How much have you contributed to the community? So we get a paper. Then it next there that community.
Chairman, 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 uh, uh, chairman, my inquiry.
Information, President.
Chairman, my inquiry, yes. My inquiry was based on the fact, like, I know consistently with the letter. It was specifically clear on social contribution. So my point is, I just want to make sure whether the basic things are the foundation, right? So I want to make sure you building a roof, you building a house. Is the foundation in place, please? I just need to know, you know, President. And paragraph, sub paragraph F say, the fund by the community shall be placed in. I'm just asking whether the foundations are there. The account, do they have, do they have an account established? Do they have a committee set up? Because if you don't have the foundation, where would the money go? So I don't want to know.
So.
It's in language, it's, so I don't want to. We're going to play that.
They will, they will hold a counter. Maybe I can just make a note there. Again, there's where. There, I will, just come for him. I know you related to what he said. Again.
Yeah.
Because he has said, when, uh, those raised the issue as to his obligation to the communities, he said he's not in good standing. But not if standing, he had meetings, meeting with the communities. So, uh, I wish that they promise to make payment this year, okay? So he's really a provision. Again, he's really a provision.
So, so. Let us add the witness. Let us add the witness. Mr. Richards. Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Why it is true that we are asking for payments and receiving our contribution? The question for lawmakers and their concern is that whether the first aspect of setting up a local community team and manage the fund. Have you done that in the implementation process? Do you have that structure?
Information.
No. If he knew that, if he knew that they raised a law that says, hey, you should pay the money, he only had meeting with the community, asking them to sell our leadership. So, but I.
President, information.
Let us have one hearing. Let us have one hearing. I know, one minute. Concession hearing usually got a lot of the. Let us go after it in a way that we can get the kind of answer we want. The first question is that, since you have acknowledged not being good standing, somewhat the process has to do with procedural administrative process. One of the procedural administrative process, have you set up an administrative team on the ground in your company? And is there an account already open? Because even if you are not paid, you should be able to establish the two things. Are you in good standing with that too?
When we had our meeting with the community, it was.
So since.
It was arbitrated by.
No, give me, give me.
President, input your information.
Twenty nineteen and that to twenty twenty-five. Your, your coming was in twenty twenty-four. Yes. When you came in as CEO.
I came in as CEO December of twenty twenty.
December twenty twenty-four, correct. Prior to you coming, was there any system that you made in place to answer some of the questions we're asking? Can I ask that question?
Information, President. Uh, 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 Coach.
Give it information.
Coach, thank you. So, uh, if you look at the, the concession, it, it took into effect, um, by twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen, yeah. I joined the legislature twenty twenty-one and I had a review of that, of that document. And I realized that the committee was critical in accessing that fund. So I worked with the dead, uh, leadership and we worked with the locals, the traditional people, and we put into place the committee. Uh, the, the requirement is that the Minister of Eternal Affairs is the one who is coordinating that. So when our committee were put into place, the minister then was the arboree. And even when we got the new minister, we also visited the Eternal Affairs Ministry and we activated the, the committee. The, 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 the reality is like Brad said, Hummer Bread were almost dead and please just.
One minute, one minute. Hold on, hold on, the first issue. This document will notice that twenty-five years. This document have a less than twenty-five years. It have a less than of the concession, so.
So for me, this is.
Oh, yeah. How that you stop there with the information and we take on a whole. Okay.
Thank you, President. You get a account. President, I hope my concern will not be like a way forward. But when I listen to the CEO, right? Yes. He either made that the company are not being in good standing of all its obligation. With that said, I would want us to, to hear from.
L R A.
L R A.
Yes.
When people are not in good standing, when people default, what should be done as it relates to what we have in the M D A? L R A will tell, tell you, if people are default, they are debited, that they are not in good standing, what's the way forward?
So, thank you again, Honorable Don. We asked the deputy commissioner to answer that simple question. Where are we? There's a payment tax area that they have failed to pay. Is there anything? When was the last time they paid? How much are they owing from your own records?
Okay, from the L R A record, Hummer Bread owe three million four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. That three billion four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. What constitutes? The, the concrete development fund is two point one million now. The commit, the committee administrator fees is thirty-five thousand. The cost of use of fees is one million three hundred fifty thousand. That is what brought to the total of thirty-three million four hundred eighty-five thousand.
Okay, so. So, you know.
President, just a follow-up please.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, I'm through all this. My, my follow-up was, uh, with this, what are the penalties? Is it that because you owe all this money, we already negotiate and pay all the penalty interest? Is there a cutoff point for payment? Those are just basic thing that we are here for you to question back to.
Yeah, so.
And also, how long?
How long?
And, and follow-up to the distinguished gentleman from, from Nibah County. Uh, are you in conversation with Hummer Bread? Given their difficulties, right?
And, uh, is there any kind of, uh, arrangement going on between the, since they recognize since the record showing this kind of debt of something?
Uh, Mr. Deputy Commissioner, as far as I'm saying, there's no record before the legislature that say Hamebrat is financially distressed. There's no record before us. We passed a concession that we need to enforce, that we all need to live up to, there's no record. While we want to know how many they owe us, how they will pay our money, and we get the money transferred to the different accounts. So that can hear, if they knew that, why they can't turn the document down and say, I want the concession? They can do it, they still owing on to here, they still owing on up the gate, and they owing and they pay. So, in the face of that, I'm asking colleague, that Hamebrat update us with their payment schedule with L R A, and we compare that and come up a decision within the shortest time, if we can have a way forward on our position, we take a way forward.
Okay, uh, let me, the president. Before taking a way forward, I want to ask one question, and then after I've given a way forward. We are part of our global community, and our action should confront with what the norms of the global community would thought. Uh, if Mister Reggie can bear me wishing that it was Liberia today, bow later day, very concession, who are being dragged to court. Concerning international best practice, how can you address signing our concession since twenty nineteen, depriving the citizens of a four counties in power? And both of that, depriving the country because the country, if the man was taking our concession, who have started discussion with potential investors. But today, the people cannot get their social development funds, you are obligated to government. The thousand of jobs you say you are going to, to produce, you cannot produce them. And I can remember some of the reason why we even filed the concession agreement, because the concession agreement was here on a heading time for almost, I think, six years. It was on the page regime, the fifty four, that we signed this agreement. And some of the reasons are prompted us to sign this agreement, because Hamebrat, you have built the rule up to the court. And since then, there is nothing, we cannot hear anything. And then today we see you, people are saying, uh, Hamebrat, now put them in law. All of those being said, Mister President, I move.
Before you move, uh, before you move.
Before.
Before you move, uh.
Uh, yeah.
President. Before.
I said.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll test one of, I mean, let's move, let us you.
Let's do, do.
Let's state a little.
Okay, uh, yeah, L R A has given us a figure, I think, I saw them writing a figure.
Yes, sir. On weekend. L R A has given a figure.
Yeah.
So we want to see if they can respond. They said they do not have a capital of payment and obligation yet. So let us see a way forward that capture some of these things before the next hearing.
So Mister President, we think of this hearing, and for the fact that Hamebrat was impacted to this specific documents, for which we did not come prepared with those documents, it means that we cannot move any further. And for the fact that L R A has given us an idea in terms of what Hamebrat owes, it would be good that we allow due diligence to, to take place. That since Hamebrat did not come with the documentation, the hearing be suspended with Hamebrat remaining on a court to appear before the committee on Fri.
Friday.
Friday. Friday. On Friday of this week, wherein they will present all of their financial payments to the government of Liberia as it relate to what is then projected by the L R A. I'm gonna tell you something.
Yeah, they move a settlement that Hamebrat presents a capital of their financial payments and obligations. And are you ready to vote?
Already.
Already.
Honorable Soka.
Uh. We have sent them back here.
Yeah.
You do it this time and that. We've seen you, we, we, yeah, we've seen you, already, uh, Honorable President. Honorable President, uh, to the movement. I will be ready to vote. Where you to kindly accept this simple amendment, requesting, in addition to the documentation that the witness reviews, kindly bring in their, at least last three years' audited financial statement, according to section seventeen point four of their NDA, sub paragraph A, the, uh, small i, two, uh, of the NDA.
Considering that the hearing surrounds the obligation of Hamebrat, we just ask financial.
Already.
Already.
Honorable Massey, you're not talking now.
Uh, Mister President, thank you, and, uh, to the movement. I think we have planned listening to Hamebrat's delivery. I see no reason why we should allow Hamebrat to come back here on Friday. The fact that Hamebrat have planned to sit there to this ballot on a whole, that they are not being in good standing with the community, it tells us how to handle that. They are not also being compliant in terms of their financial obligation. So I will be ready to vote if this ballot, the obligation owed to, to the government is by law, we are not there, Hamebrat. If this ballot can come up a decision in line with, let me say, in consultation with L R A to give Hamebrat a timeframe to pay to, a timeframe in order to pay the Liberian government what Hamebrat owe. Because coming back here on Friday, I don't know what the government Hamebrat want to bring. They are not being taken by, by here. So why are they bringing this Friday? So I also support the, the, the readiness of distinguished gentlemen, uh, so can. Let Hamebrat also, along with the, the lending that we gave, let Hamebrat also, along with its financial, on the report, for past three years, they are paying, if they are, they are saying they are not being financial, financial. They are not being financial protected to be, to be compliant.
So your, your readiness is that Hamebrat will should take a decision today?
Yes.
Now up to Friday. Okay, let go.
Yes, so the honourable gentleman, and this gentleman of full Nibah County, a veteran in the mining industry, uh, considering due process, a call for the party accused to be given the opportunity, and now which is constitutional. Uh, L R A has raised the amount that Hamebrat owes.
And they are not raising the penalties, so.
In as much as Hamebrat may not be in good standing, it does not negate the fact that she has not made some payment. He order for Hamebrat to reconcile with what L R A is projecting. That's why we giving them the opportunity again to go back, to come back on Friday, this time around fully prepared with all substantial documents, so based upon that, I'm ready.
Yeah.
A further community.
Alright.
Honorable. A further community difference beginning to us.
Talking for you, alright. No, no.
A further community difference beginning to us.
I'm sharing.
A further community.
For you.
Honorable President. The distinguished.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Of witnesses in the, to the movement.
Yeah.
I'll be ready to vote. Were you to accept this simple amendment? You can remember, this going day eleven. Please. Or only. Go. Completely remember, remember I have a sign of twenty fourteen when I was superintendent. They put exploration.
Very nice.
I'm flowing.
Man, lady busy.
I'm flowing.
Man, lady busy.
I'm flowing.
I was so, it was so.
I'm flowing.
Yeah.
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 That's maybe a lot of rejection. The most effective.
Well, you know, part of ninety eighty. They did, they did, they did exploration twenty fourteen, and they discovered three point four million ounces of gold, according to our report, and from that time, they are being making payments. For some reason, with, I remember, Hamebrat being serving, and passing the bill for to this one, their record will show. I'm telling you that the record I show, because in my report, we want to make it, they were always, I don't know, can they work for four million dollars for that time of day. So then I will be ready to vote if I, and, and L R A will go back to the record, and when you take over, consider it on with liability and, and. And what's the what they have? They will also know to the, other records from after Hamebrat bring in standard, I'll be ready to vote.
So, so, well, so equally, that's the reason why we want to give Hamebrat the opportunity to return on Tuesday, to allow, I mean, on Friday, to allow confirm what L R A is saying or to come up with a counter. If there is a counter provided by facts, then it means that the committee can take a decision.
So with that.
Yeah, I'm a head of.
It's definitely.
But you're regarding what is, is he confirming the certain? You guys know what, that, that we can vote.
President.
Yeah.
Yeah, already.
Yeah.
Okay. My is simple.
Everything is simple here. No, no, basically.
Uh, for the movement, I will be ready to vote if they just, um, consider this amendment, just two simple one, that, uh, Hamebrat see this motion as an invitation to the next meeting. Uh, there will be no official invitation, as you see as an invitation for Friday, and that, uh, the meeting, uh, the hearing will be, uh, I mean, uh, at two P M.
Instead of twelve?
Yeah, twenty.
Friday.
Friday. So, uh, fourteen now.
Eh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of them.
So, so the honourable gentleman, Friday, I'm not going to mention my six, Friday. It would be a difference to Hamebrat if, eh, you see an official petition before their own record, but that is motion set as, uh, the motion of the petition as well.
At this point, you will not say a word because lawmaker are speaking and stating our readiness. When that process is done with, then we will be able to.
My, my apologies, I heard that was in a round.
No, sometimes we just don't know the procedure. Everyone sitting while they would have vote. Yeah.
Yeah, Mister President.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Whoa, who listen? The men who sitting near you today. Like, it's the woman. Mister Woman. Mister Woman.
Yeah, listening.
Mister Woman, I'll be ready to vote, were you to consider this amendment, that among the documents that have been requested by this ballot, uh, that the accounts that the N D are looking to, that have been opened by the communities in which their money will be deposited, they can bring along with it, so that we can verify and know those secretaries, those accounts, and make sure that the accounts are open. I'll be ready to vote.
Information.
I so accept.
Information, I have, I have said that.
All those who got readiness, they did.
I assure this community, I have said my community.
So are you ready to vote?
Ready.
Those in favor of the motion, that Hamebrat appear on Friday, two o'clock, and come with all of the literature, explanation, has to do with tax obligations, community contribution, and accounts, including receipts of all financial payments to the area and finance. And a copy of their financial, audited, audited copy of the financial statement, audited copy of the financial statement for the past three years. Those in favor of the motion, hold the rail out, or say it.
Yeah.
Look like this, yeah. Motion has it. So, Mr. CEO, Frankenstein, why you want to say something else?
Honorable President, thank you. Um, due to my medical situation, I'll be flying out on Wednesday night, and I would like the committee to honor that my administrative, uh, colleagues can present this information on Friday, because I won't be here. Uh, I came for this meeting, the, the medical appointment got pushed till, till, till Friday.
Sometime, sometime, you know the reason why we always request for the CEO? Because there are decisions that are not within the purview of your staff. When a company have a CEO, we always love to sit along the CEO, because that decision has to do with taking decisions that you can take to the board. Instead of us having a second party who need to communicate it to you, then you have to have a clear picture of what is unfolding. If it will be of wisdom, my advice is that.
Bring the inquiry for you.
What is the inquiry?
My inquiry is that, say it's a medical issue, that, I don't know, you go, go, instead of being.
Yeah. You go from one end to the Friday, it's something that you can just take it, instead of you going to come back.
What am I going to come back?
Yes.
When you are flying. I'm flying out Wednesday night, and I'll be back here on September the fifth.
So we can have the hearing on Wednesday?
Um, Wednesday morning.
Uh?
Yeah, Wednesday. Wednesday morning, I, I have to go to the airport, uh, in the afternoon.
Yeah, should I? So tomorrow?
Do it tomorrow.
You can do it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, you can bring the document, try the year tomorrow. Tomorrow. Yeah. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, too.
So I draw the date to tomorrow, two P M, motion.
Yeah.
The judge are revising the date.
Yeah.
Hmm? The judge are revise the date tomorrow.
Honorable President, uh, do we need counsel here tomorrow? Because they're not available.
Oh, the lawyer, man, the, the issue is that the lawyer will advise you.
We, we were advised to bring counsel.
They won't, they asked why you go your counsel, because we ask you those things, why you should not be in a, in a. So with that, your lawyer.
So we.
But you can explain, you said, no, there was no reason why, we brought the.
Solid.
So your lawyer, that, compulsory for your lawyer to be a law. But if she let to be here, no problem. That's your lawyer, you pay your lawyer, so you enjoy the company. So, with, with the appeal, the year will be rescheduled for tomorrow.
What's that?
Two, two o'clock, two o'clock.
Two o'clock tomorrow?
Two o'clock, yes.
L R A will be here?
Yes, L R A will be here. So that's, that's how we come to the close of this, uh, public hearing with officials of Hamebrat, and, uh, of course, the, uh, representative for the Labrador Revenue Authority.
Everyone's be ready.
So this is Front Fish Africa Live.
Guy, they're not meeting to reschedule.
So we want to say many thanks for watching Front Fish Africa Live from the Capitol Building, specifically from the House of Representatives, my name is Yimanga, I'm with the Congress, reporting live, helping to give live this, uh, public hearing by the House of Representatives.
I'm bringing live this, uh, public hearing by the House of Representatives with officials for Hamburg. And also the Liberian Revenue Authority.